...of the whole, April sixteenth, seven o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
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 Thank you.
Before we move to the first item, just want to kind of read something out. You know, a little bit kind of on a unity perspective that, you know, we are Fergus. We've been in session for some hundred days as a council. We were elected by the people for the people. We are here to work for and on behalf of the residents of this community, period. As we all know, this is a different council with strong individual beliefs, which I don't think is all bad. However, we need to harness that energy and passion to accomplish greater things for Fergus. It would be a boring world if we all agreed on every single item. We do need diversity of opinions, but we need to narrow that down to collaborative solutions. Each and every one of us brings something to the table. We all, including staff, have experiences that are unique and that can help us to find the best solutions for Fergus. We have a lot of discussion about many things. Some want more items on the agenda, some want specific words in language incorporating documents, et cetera, et cetera. At some point, we have to start to trust and understand that we all are different and manage accordingly. For many years, I've been a manager, basically stuck in the middle. But you have to manage, you've got to learn to manage up as well as down. You know, this is a different type of structure, so we've got to learn to manage across. If council gets frustrated with each other or staff, or vice versa, it's all of our problem and not just one of us. Somewhere, communication has broken down that we didn't understand each other, whether we didn't listen or we didn't speak clearly, and we can spend many hours in repeat mode. The council is a body as a whole. There are no individual heroes. You can have personal opinions. However, once a council has voted and approved or denied an item, it's done. The repeat and rinse only inhibits us moving forward on other items. Sometimes, we have to accept with grace the verdicts of the body as a council. Staff is here to support us in our deliberations and serve the public. Outside of council meetings, they have other day-to-day functions to ensure the smooth operations of the city. We do not have to like each other, but we do have to respect each other. We all have a common cause to make Fergus better, for the people that live and work here, in whatever capacity we serve, whether it be an elected member or a staff person. The time has come to put our personal beefs behind us, stop the underhand comments and the labeling, and focus on Fergus. We need to start hammering out decisions, yes or no, and move on to the next item. We need clear and concise answers in meetings. If we do that, we can churn out a lot of work, if we want to stop hearing ourselves kind of continually talk. Collectively, we are a solid group of people appointed to serve Fergus. I like you all individually, but as a group, it's becoming tiring. We absolutely need to come together for Fergus Falls. I want to introduce a new portion called the lightning round at the end of each council meeting, at the end of the session. That session will allow each person to have a couple of minutes, no more. This is an opportunity to talk about things you want, as long as it's relevant to city business. This can be anything from up-and-coming events, recognizing something or individual, future topics for discussions, answering public questions, et cetera. It's not a time for political jabs. Let's leave that to the professionals in St. Paul and Washington. They do it better than we can. But I think as much as anything, you know, we are a good group of people, and if we work together, we can accomplish a lot. And I think, you know, we need to kind of like buckle down and we need to kind of focus on the city, and I think we can get it done. And that's kind of part of trying to introduce this kind of piece at the end of the city council meetings, is that that gives everybody an opportunity to speak freely about obviously matters that are relevant to the city. So with that, I'll get off my canai horse, and we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. We have a full agenda today, so. First item is grant. Obviously, grant came before us regarding crossings. This is a state-funded project. If we adhere to the rules of the state, it is fully funded. If we wish to deviate from that, then obviously it will cost the city participation money. So with that grant, you looked at, the question was parking, and whether we could reduce or reduce the number of lost parking lots. So over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. Back here again today to discuss some of the revisions made. I'm going to first run through the council action recommendation, and then I'll go through some of the revisions made to both Summit and Mill Street as requested at the last committee of the whole. Additionally, I had some questions come about the quiet zone, so I'll cover that a little bit as well. So again, today, just requesting, accept the plans and specifications, authorization to advertise for bid. We've substantially completed the project plans and specs, and the estimated probable construction cost is $565,000. As the mayor said, this is going to be covered through MinDOT funding. I have a couple alternates in there, and it's simply, the MinDOT maintenance funds aren't exactly known right now, and so it's, if crossing has to be done at a later date, mainly, the two alternates are Summit and Freiburg. If they don't have the funds this year, they'll have them in future years, and so it'll easily allow us to pull a crossing out and then not have to rebid the project. So just trying to make sure that we don't have to rebid if the full funding isn't there this year. With that, I'm recommending a twenty-one-day publication. The bid opening would be on May thirteenth at 2:00 p.m. Once those final bids come in and construction costs are known, I'd work with MinDOT and Andrew to talk to MinDOT, figuring out a construction agreement, so that I'd have that in place prior to coming to council and recommending to award the bid. So we'd have those dollars figured out from MinDOT prior to entering into any sort of agreement, or awarding the bid to any contractor. Again, as Anthony said, MinDOT Section 130 program, and so I'm not anticipating at this time any sort of local costs. Moving on, just want to discuss the revisions. So I have both the original layouts and the revised layouts. So Figure One and Two depict the original layout and then the revised layout. I was able to reduce Summit Avenue quite significantly, reducing the overall project limits, and then expanding the roadway width from twenty-four to thirty-two. So original parking loss was twenty-four spots. That's been reduced down to a total of five spots. I did talk with a gentleman from the Federated Church. They had some concerns, as you guys did, about the parking loss. I talked with him via phone, sent him the revised layouts. He was in agreement with the revised layouts and didn't have significant concerns about, I think there's three spots on the west side of the tracks that will be lost, two on the east. Moving on to Mill Street, which are Figures Three and Four, I guess I want to back up to, the aim with these extended limits was to maximize that MinDOT funding as much as possible. Summit Avenue has a good pavement condition, so I don't have concerns about reducing that area that was recently seal-coated within the last handful of years. As you guys, I'm sure, are aware, Mill Street is in pretty rough condition pavement-wise, so I'm trying to still maximize that project area to capture MinDOT funding, to essentially do the roadway replacement. And so I think I struck a pretty good middle ground with Figure Four, where I'm expanding the parking, so it's moving from twelve spots lost in the original layout to seven spots lost. And then in talking with Len and Public Works, they had some concerns about turning movements with on southbound Mill Street, and so the northeast and southwest quadrants have the curb reduced to allow for some turning movements as well. So again, reducing parking loss to a total of seven spots compared to twelve with this revised layout. Additionally, I just want to cover, any of these enhancements done at any of the crossings will not bar the city from, if at a later date you desire to move forward with making this a quiet zone, it will not bar you from moving forward with that. It'll just be additional enhancements you have to make to the crossings, safety measures to move forward with a quiet zone. So that could look like adding four gate arms at each crossing to essentially bar anybody from crossing the railroad, and additional pedestrian and safety enhancements. Could be channelization at the center line to not allow somebody to cross the center line and go around the gate arms. But I just wanted to reassure you, none of these enhancements that we're doing with this project will bar you for, if at a later date or in the future you decide to pursue a quiet zone for these crossings. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Anybody got any questions?
I appreciate your time, Grant. Would you mind coming here so that I can explain this to you, and then we can try to explain it to the crowd? On Summit, couldn't the curb just run like it is and not put grass in here and make that road bump this out? This sidewalk must go this way, huh?
No, there's sidewalk back here.
No, but you've got a walkway here.
Nope, that's a driveway for the alley.
Okay. All right. So I'm trying to get rid of these things. So you could point that out on your presentation.
So Mr. Layton, and we looked at this as, would like to see similar to Summit Avenue, really shrinking the curb bump outs as much as possible. My only concern with that is then going to MinDOT and saying, hey, we want to, we still want to replace the roadway to the full extent. They're going to look and say, well, you're only replacing curb thirty feet or forty feet away from the railroad tracks. We're only going to pay for pavement replacement that far. And then, so that's my only concern, is that they're going to look at it and say, we're not going to pay for any further pavement replacement. So that's why I kept the limits as they were, because I feel like we can discuss with MinDOT, and they'd be willing to fund that entire block then. And there's no utilities under this block, so it's not like we're coming back in ten years or whenever utility replacements would have to be done and ripping up the street again.
I'll offer the resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Any other questions? Scott.
It was my suggestion to look at this with the, looking ahead to the quiet zone deal, and so I just wanted to address that briefly. I think that this is okay as a Phase One, if we look at it in that way, Phase One of a future quiet zone. You look at these other cities that have got quiet zones, it's been an advantage to them. I believe it leads to increased property values, and it would lead to better opportunities for future development in this area. And as long as these improvements can be made, where we don't waste anything, we don't find something installed that has to be torn back up and redone, and I'm supporting this.
Thank you. Your Honor, one final. On Summit, you have green space there on the north?
Correct.
I question the green space. I mean, it's, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to mow it? It would probably be better off if it needs to be there, and it can't go back to curb because of MinDOT, maybe it should just be sidewalk.
So it is currently seeded in grass in the boulevard there, so we'd simply just be adding, it looks like about five feet of additional grass there. So it wouldn't be different, it'd just be a little bit, maybe a couple extra swaths to mow for the landowner.
Is the road already narrow there?
No, we would be adding, like I said, about five or so, five-ish feet of mowable area there.
I would recommend, if you will, Option Three, get rid of the green space, make it more walk.
That's my opinion. Thank you.
I mean, we need to obviously move unless, keep it moving. We can't keep coming up with more revisions and options. We have a motion on the table to accept the revisions as stated. You know, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Aye.
One, obviously against. So the motion will move. Is everybody happy to put that on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, so it will go on the consent agenda. The next item on the agenda, thank you, Grant. The next item on the agenda is sidewalk and driveway program rebates, and I call upon Andrew Brimseth.
Good morning, Your Honor, members. In front of you this morning, in relation to our annual sidewalk program, and setting the assessment rates for that program for 2025, and also initiating the project this morning as well. Our engineering department oversees this program, specifically Troy Haughey manages this program and has done for a number of years. And I'll just say now, people that are wishing to participate in the program should reach out to Troy, and he'll get you on the list and get you taken care of. On an annual basis, what happens is we set these rates, we work with a local contractor to do all of the work and get volume pricing, which provides better pricing for homeowners that are participating in this program. In looking at changes from 2024 to 2025, there's a few, but not many. The rates for removal of curb and gutter are going to remain unchanged. Removing concrete is going up $1.50 per square foot. We are seeing some increases in concrete costs, so the four-inch concrete walk, that's five feet wide, so you're kind of normal sidewalk. We're seeing $5 per linear foot increase. We do talk to contractors and get quotes, or suppliers to get quotes prior to setting these rates on an annual basis. The regular width, concrete walks are going up 50 cents a square foot, and then no changes to any of our curb and gutter reinforcement, sawing out the two-minute or concrete or the six-inch concrete. As I mentioned, this is a 100% voluntary program. If folks want to participate, they can sign up by letting Troy and the engineering department know, and then the assessment rates is set by the council are what is paid by the homeowner. The city does share in 50% of the cost, so it's a 50/50 breakdown between the city and the participants in the program, and the city budget's approximately $30,000 a year to cover the city's portion of those costs. And in visiting with Troy over the last few days, we don't always use that amount, so we carry forward. So if there is a big project, we heard from First Lutheran Church at the last city council meeting, that they may be interested in participating, we do have the ability to take on some of those bigger projects and include them within this program as well. The action before the council is to initiate public improvement number 6082, which is the 2025 sidewalk and driveway program, and then approve the sidewalk assessment rates as presented.
Would somebody care to make that motion? Thank you, Al.
I can second that.
Thank you, Laurel. Any questions?
I have one, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
How does it work if it's all voluntary, if we see properties that are in desperate need of this, does the city staff reach out? Or if there are complaints, especially around schools and things like that, how do we deal with it if people aren't reaching out saying that they want this done?
Yeah, we can make them aware, we do make them aware of the program. One thing I failed to mention is that folks that have repairs that are needed can do that on their own and/or, you know, by hiring their own contractor. They don't have to do it through this program necessarily. The benefit of this program is that we get the kind of volume discount, but also they have the ability to pay it back over a number of years with the assessments. But if there's problems that, you know, have reached a level of nuisance or a dangerous area, the city's in contact with them, telling them that those areas need to be repaired, and then we give them the option to either address that on their own or we'll do it through this program and then assess it to the property.
Mr. Brimseth, thank you. On average, how many people utilize this program every year? Are we looking at five? Are we looking at 50? Where is it at?
Yeah, you know, I guess it all depends. Bill, I don't know if you know, but I would guess, you know, around 10 to a dozen, 15 at the most.
I think it really varies. Some years, we've seen great participation, and then other years, maybe three to five, so.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. None?
I did have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
I was just wondering, what is currently, because I know that we do roll over, we do a lot, 30,000 each year, I was just wondering what's in there right now?
How much we've carried forward?
Yeah.
I don't have that on the top of my head. I did it with my project closeouts, and yeah, I can, I'll bring that on Monday, because I have it, it's just up in my office.
So you could just send an email out.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Did we, do we have it in affirmative?
Yeah, we did.
Right. With that, is everybody good for that to go on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
And Bill will send out that information. The next item on the agenda is the MinDOT tour agreement, MinDOT detour agreement. Recommendation by the council to approve the detours per MinDOT SP 5680-147. Over to Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. It may become a tour of Fergus Falls if we move forward, but MinDOT, as you may or may not know, is doing a concrete overlay project, which is the state project number that the mayor identified, this summer on I-94 eastbound between Rothstein and Fergus Falls, so that entire stretch will be impacted by this project. And because of the length of that project, MinDOT will be looking at detouring traffic that is southbound on Highway 59, that's looking to go eastbound on I-94. The detour will be onto Ottertail County Stadium, Highway 88, which would be at the, I don't remember the exit number, but the old, where the old gas station is there. Skelly, yep. So that, into town on County Road 88, turning on to Tower Road, which is now known as County Stadium, County Road One, and then getting on to Lincoln Avenue, which would be at the intersection of Tower Road and Lincoln Avenue at the lights there, and then taking Lincoln Avenue from there to the interstate exit on the west side of town. So that's what the detour outlook's like. With pushing this trunk highway traffic onto our local roads, MinDOT is looking for an agreement with the city and is expected to compensate the city based on the road life consumed by this detour, per their formula. I will note, the county has approved an agreement with MinDOT, that happened back in February. Their portion, obviously, is much bigger with County Road 88 and County Road One being a part of this as well. And the amount that the state is determined is appropriate to award the city for the use of this detour is $1,360.23. They are utilizing 0.91 mile length of Lincoln Avenue. It's anticipated it'll be about 125 days of use, with 2,331 average daily traffic anticipated to utilize that detour. I will note, and I said this in my memo, but if you're looking at the plan sheet that was provided within your packet, it shows a four-way stop. Here it is. On the bottom right side of this visual, College Way and State Aid One, which again is Tower Road in town, it showed a four-way stop there. That is not actually going to happen. That was a concern that was raised by the county, but also when we had our engineering team and our law enforcement review this plan, that was also raised by them, and thankfully the state had indicated that was already out of the plan, but they didn't have the ability to revise this drawing, because they already had signed agreements with the county. So that's what we're looking at doing today. I had our engineering staff review the reimbursement rate to ensure that they felt it was appropriate. They confirmed that it was. I also asked MinDOT to look at that again to make sure it's the right amount. They confirmed that their numbers were correct, and I asked them a second time now to review that, because I had some questions from council members about that number, and they're going to take a look at that again. So I believe they indicated this is the formula that they use for all the projects that they do, and the amount is correct based on that formula. So I'm really not in a position to push back beyond that, and like I said, I verified that with our longtime city engineer, and he felt that this looked good and appropriate as well.
With that, would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
No, second, I got a question too, Your Honor.
Thank you, Laurel. And Scott, go ahead with your question.
The detour is going to be just for the people who want to exit off of, I think it's six, no, it's, what is it, not 57?
59.
59. To exit off there, the traffic will continue through, but it's just anybody who wants to exit off to go to Walmart, let's say, or to Perkins or any of those?
Yeah.
It won't be everybody, everybody on the interstate, it'll be just the ones that want to exit, exit 59.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Brimseth, thank you very much. I had the same question, so I'm going to run it past you four times. Have we talked to Carlson? Is there any other communities that have gotten higher? Is this just what the state says and we're stuck?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I'd say we're stuck necessarily, but I spoke with District Four, which is the Detroit Lakes region, that's where the office is located. And what they said is this is the exact same formula they use and have used to determine amounts on all the projects that they do. So I don't know how I push back beyond that.
Yeah. Even if we got an increase, it's going to be insignificant amount of the time, but I think if they put, if you were to figure out all the miles, all the gallons that are spent on that highway, 91, 0.91 miles, I mean, the state's going to collect some 15,000 in road tax, so I just think the city's getting the short side. But again, $1,300, even if it's $2,600, we could spend another three days on it, and as Mayor Hicks says, it's rock and roll. But they did offer us another state-approved plan, but I'll stand down.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a reason that they're going on that road as opposed to just going straight? I mean, if you're on, if you're coming on Tower Road, wouldn't you just carry on on Tower Road and go back on the interstate to the other side? Or is it just more the traffic coming off, which would be coming off anyway?
Honestly, don't know what the logic is behind it. That's what they identified as their preference.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those against, same sign. The motion is approved, good with a consent agenda?
Yes.
Right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a department update by our community development director, Clara Black.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am the second department who gets to give you an update on what we're working on and what we do. Since we haven't had a lot of chances to really talk about community development, I thought I would give you maybe a slightly broader view of what we're up to. You can go ahead to the next slide. So I like to think of the community development department as collaboration station. If somebody has a project or a question or something that they want to engage the city on, I am very often their first stop. We have a ton of partners throughout the region that we work with on various kinds of projects. Put together a list of our top partners. We are obviously working very closely with Ottertail County CDA and our friends at the HRA. What's up, Michael? I see you in the back there. SBDC is another group that we work with that you heard from Ian Carlstrom at an economic development session. He talked to you about the programs that they have, working with small businesses. He is an excellent resource that we send a lot of people to. Chamber of Commerce is another great partner, West Central Initiative, we work with them on grants. They also convene a group of economic development professionals in the area, so we take advantage of that. They have similar loan programs to what the city offers, so we're very often in contact with Greg Wagner over there about the programs they're running versus the programs we're running. Minnesota Deed, we get a lot of grants through Minnesota Deed, so we're in pretty constant communication with them. U of M Extension Office is another partner that we tap on every once in a while for either different programs that they're running. We can use them to access technology called INPLAN, which can run economic development reports for our region. We've also used them to do different studies in the past. SHPO is the State Historic Preservation Office. We have a good connection with them, because we are a certified local government through our Heritage Preservation Commission. And we're also working with Ottertail County GIS Department and Pro Weston Associates on keeping our GIS projects as up-to-date as possible, now that we don't have dedicated staff in City Hall. Some tools that community development can use to help projects get through to the finish line, TIF and abatement, you'll very often see me up here talking about those projects. We also have a Port Authority. Obviously, I serve as the executive director of the Port Authority, so we have those tools that we can lean back on. We also have revolving loan funds, which I'm going to dive into a little bit deeper here in a second. And community development also applies for or supports other departments in a lot of grant requests. So next, I'm going to talk a little bit about business development for Fergus Falls, because I think that might be fairly relevant to economic development. because I think that might be fairly relevant to economic development discussions that have been occurring at the council level. Business development for Fergus Falls is one of the boards and commissions that the city has working on different projects. This is a group that has been in existence in some form since the 1980s. BDFF administers several revolving loan funds. So we, at certain points in the past, have gotten either federal or state funding that we then keep in loan funds, and then we revolve that throughout the community. So we lend it out, get it back in, gain some interest on that, and then can continue on with new projects. The current loan programs that BDFF is overseeing is our MIF Fund, the Minnesota Investment Fund. That focuses a lot on like new green technologies, manufacturing, et cetera. It has some other uses as well. Intermediary relending program, IRP, that was a federally funded program that is now fully revolved, which means that we have a lot less federal restrictions on how that can be used. So we have that money available for a broader range of projects now. And then we have some funds that were started through a community development block grant, which is through HUD. We have economic development loans, so those are kind of a smaller pool of loans. We can do up to $50,000 through that program for just various changes to a building, things to get a business up and running. And facade loans, that's really focused on downtown, but we don't only use it downtown, but that's for signage, making changes to the front of your building to make it more accessible, et cetera. Some quick statistics that we put together on the loan program since the 1980s. We've had 627 total loans in the community, so a fairly busy program. There have been some years when there's less participation, some years with more. Kind of depends on the programs that are running in the group that's in charge of it. And right now, we have just over $2,522 that we can lend out to people in the community who are looking for help with their businesses. All right. So what is community development working on, on a normal basis? Probably first and foremost for when people are reaching out to the city is interpreting and enforcing Chapter 154, which is our zoning and some division chapter, which is very exciting stuff, but that's where a lot of our questions come from, so I spend a lot of time in that chapter. Number two, partnering on housing, childcare, and economic development initiatives. So I meet regularly with Katie Ginnell, who is our project manager on childcare. We're also meeting regularly with the county group on childcare. There was a meeting today at Pioneer Care to talk about Pioneer Kids. Economic development, I have been the liaison to Greater Fergus Falls in the past, and I'm looking forward to whatever step we take next and continuing to play a role in economic development there. Grant projects, so we have several active grants right now. The Mill Project, as you all are aware, the mill is being turned into a boutique hotel. That project is due to open in July, which means that we have a grant through Minnesota Deed that will be closing out at that same time. So that grant closes out once the project becomes viable. So we'll be working on that with Minnesota Deed this summer. The Dairy Property, that is an active grant as well with money from the state legislature. We are at present working on getting the trail design, so that is on the agenda later today, I believe. And 801 West Stanton, that was a grant that we had through the Community Energy Transition Trust. So we are continuing to work on ways to get that housing component to fruition since that was one of the reasons that we received that grant from the Community Energy Transition Program, which is also through Deed. And we also are working on a grit chamber grant for around Lake Alice that should be coming to fruition. I'm working with Alex on that one sometime this summer. And number four, this keeps me fairly busy as well, is all of our boards and commissions. So we have a public arts commission, a heritage preservation commission, a human rights commission, and then business development for Fergus Falls, like I mentioned. We also have a bike and ped group that's gone a little bit dormant, but I'll just quick touch on some of the initiatives that some of our boards and commissions are working on. Public arts, the most visible thing that you're going to be seeing this summer is the sculpture walk. So they have determined the locations where the sculptures are going to be downtown in conversation with the city to make sure that they're, you know, in the right spot. They're not going to be in the way of snow removal, et cetera. And right now, they're going to be planning their opening event, so I'll share more information about that when we have it. The Heritage Preservation Commission, they have chosen 2025 to work on some initiatives surrounding the Regional Treatment Center. They are also continuing discussions about a possible downtown historic district. So those are probably two of the projects that you'll see coming from them. Human Rights Commission is really just focused on awareness at this point and a little bit of education, just getting information out about, you know, what human rights commissions can do in the state of Minnesota and just information about different, like, days to highlight, months to highlight. Black History Month is a big one for them, et cetera. So they're working on building some partnerships in the community to be a little bit more visible. And as I mentioned, BDFF is working on loans. And then we do have a bike and ped group who are working on becoming some sort of, maybe a subset of the Parks Board. They've lost some membership, but we're hoping to get them back up and running in some form or capacity because they do have really good insights into projects that are being engineered. They can look at it through a pedestrian lens that I think is really necessary. And then finally, I, I do spend time trying to look for new funding options or trying to align projects in such a way that they can fit with existing funding. And we take some long shots as well. We've, we send stuff in fairly regularly, regularly for federal earmarks. We got pretty far along in the process, actually, last year with the Norgren Property Project. We're looking at reviving that for this coming legislative year and then possibly adding a couple new projects as they have opened up that application period, closes April 22nd. So we've got some quick turnaround time on that. Okay, moving forward. As you are also aware, the city has a new website. That's something that Lynn and I spend a lot of time working on together. But along with that, we are also moving away from the AS400 internally. So we are in a place where we have some opportunity to really streamline our resources and processes that we have available forward-facing to the public. So I'm really excited to be able to dive into that a little bit more and see what our new internal system is going to be able to provide us when it comes to things like submitting your permitting online, paying your fees easily attached to those permits, just things that our current infrastructure doesn't allow currently, just to make things a little bit easier for people in the public. I'm also interested in building trust and relationship with you as the council members. There are still some of you that I've never had a conversation with outside of standing here in front of you at a council meeting. So I would love to be able to answer questions for you or just talk to you about different projects when time allows. And then a wish list. City has never had a comprehensive plan. I'm not going to stand here and ask you for a comprehensive plan, but it would be really interesting to have a growth plan, something that we can work on in partnership with some of our, our best partners, the HRA, the school district, et cetera, just to make some plans for, you know, where growth is going to be occurring in Fergus Falls, how we can best align our zoning to make sure that those initiatives can be seen through to the finish line, et cetera. And then something I talk with, talk with Rolf about almost every year is doing some sort of an ordinance overhaul. A lot of our ordinances have been in place since the 60s. So there are certainly places where there can be updates made. It's just a very time-consuming process to sit and do that. But it is something that I think is, is necessary in, in the coming years just to make us a progressive and, and easy-to-work-with city. So with that, I am done with my update. Happy to take questions or just sit back down, whatever you want. Thank you, Clara.
Thank you, Clara. Is any questions of Clara? Mike?
Yeah, Mrs. Beck, I appreciate your presentation. I thought it was great. One of the things, and you're well aware of that, economic development is on the forefront of this city. And what, what I'm sure we'll be doing as a council and working with the city is doing a SWOT analysis of what, what Fergus Falls looks like for economic development. One of the things that I have a question for you, because I don't want you to get lost in the process. I want to know your, where you are at, where your skills are at, or where your, your priorities lie. What are some of the strengths that you can bring to us for economic development? You know, that you see that you work with? And what are some of the weaknesses that you see? So we know going forward that we have a position or a spot that, that highlights you, helps you, but also helps the mission of what we're trying to do.
Sure. I suppose strengths that we have here specifically through community development are relationships. We have a lot of really strong relationships in the community with people who had been working with Greater Fergus Falls, people who are in charge of funding, those sorts of things. So we have that going for us. When we write grant applications and things, we often are getting pretty far along in that process. So that feels pretty good. That does, definitely feels like a strength. Weaknesses, I would say, are project readiness. We have some sites available through the Port Authority for, like, immediate, like, somebody could move in with a manufacturing business and get up and running fairly quickly, but we have five of those spots left on Progress Drive. When we are looking for funding or, or economic development monies that could be coming to town, it's hard to be able to just pick a project off the shelf because we have either stopped short of having, like, the engineering in place or we just don't have the players at the table that we need at the table at the time that the funding is ready. So that's not unique to Fergus Falls. That's something that I think every community struggles with, but it's something that I think if we had some more, more robust communications, both internally and then externally with counseling and your visions, I think we could better align on some of those projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mark?
Killey, did you want something? Go ahead.
Well, he told you, you win.
Thank you, Clara. I believe your plate's quite full, and I appreciate the work that you do. In reflection of the opening comments, Mayor Hicks, I don't think anyone in this council has really, I haven't criticized any staff person. I don't believe there is a, you know, concession or any, any issues. Now, we may have a different point of view, but it's not a love-hate deal. So I've always promoted the guys in the street, guys that are in the hole at 35 below zero fixing a leak. I, I've never said anything good or bad of Clara Beck. Andrew and I maybe have had some less-than-handshake deals, but, you know, those are basically business decisions, not necessarily I love you or I don't love you. So I don't think that there is this division that this new council is bringing. I've talked to Hicks as well. Any company that has new management coming in, and I, and I express this to Mr. Brimster, this, this community, this council, this staff has been working together harmoniously for 10, 15 years that I know. And it's like running down a river in a tube, floating along, everybody's having fun, might be drinking some adult beverages. We get a new council in here, the new mayor, that has quite a different approach to many things. And you go around the next bend and there's, there's Niagara Falls. And everybody goes, oh, wow, what are we going to do? And everybody's nervous. So I really don't believe it's the contentious of the new council people. It's just a different change in focus. So I, I welcome the opportunity to visit with you, as we haven't. I speak with Bill quite a bit, and Andrew quite a bit, and Hicks quite a bit. I'm here to help. I'll attend 100 meetings this year. Hundreds of hours for $7,200. No disrespect to Ralph, I bill out at $500 an hour. I am obligated to fix this city, however I see it. I may sit differently with other people because of my background, but it's not because I'm looking to ruin the city. I'm here to change the city and bring funding to where it's supposed to be. So I'll get off my, I'll get off my platform. Thank you.
Laurel?
I've got a couple. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Second of all, I think I, I'd like the community to understand how much time you spend on planning commission. I think you kind of glossed over that a little bit.
Oh, yeah, planning commission.
From, from, which is fine, and that's not a critique, but I do think it's a big part, just from my history with that for years and years. You do a really good job with that, and there's a lot on that. And there's a lot of running with something that just shows on your desk and being ready to go with it in two weeks. And you can't really prepare for that, and you do a good job of rolling with that. Next one, I kind of have three. The 2.5 million available loan fund balance, do you have a kind of a goal set or a benchmark that you like to keep in that fund? Or does it just really vary based on what's out there?
It really varies. It really varies on, because we don't necessarily want to halt giving out funds if funds are available because we want to be, we're kind of like that last stop that people make between the bank or their own funding where they just can't quite close that gap. So we want to remain viable as that gap. The, the loan funds that I mentioned, I, I left out one fund that we do also have access to, but it remains from the old EIC. So that's money that's separate from what council is overseeing. BDFF is the, we have run it through council, but it is technically under the separate EIC tax identification. So that fund is kind of like the emergency fund, so to speak. At this point, we've tapped into it, but not a ton. So that, that's maybe a little bit more information than what you were looking for. No, we don't cap how much we're giving out at, at a given time. We don't have a set number that we're trying to keep in the coffers.
Okay, and then my other one is, can you talk a little bit about the difference? You were hired as community development. And I think because of our current economic development situation, you're really intermingled with economic development. Can you talk a little bit about the difference in your mind and your approach versus your job description with community development?
Yeah.
And what you're kind of taking on? Because you're kind of doing both, to some extent, to the best of your ability. And I think we need to recognize there is a difference between economic development and community development.
Yeah. I would say the biggest difference is just the, the day-to-day realities of what, what we would be hoping for from an economic development professional or, or an organization that was doing economic development, which is to be the boots-on-the-ground that are out there rustling up the new businesses or rustling up the new infrastructure and things that are going to come to help support those businesses, and then coming to community development and saying, okay, how do we make this reality? So then, my job is to take the projects, you know, from fairly early on, in infancy, and make sure that we're talking with whoever is doing the economic development to align the programs and, like, things like our zoning to ensure that those projects can get through. So I, I help a lot on, like, the ordinance side of things when it comes to zoning, ensuring that they're, you know, the site location process is, is smooth. But I don't have the capacity, nor is it currently in my job description, to be the one that's going out and calling businesses and saying, how are you doing? Do you want to come to Fergus Falls, et cetera?
Any other questions? If not, I think, I would say is, just on the loans, the, I think that they are posted on the website, the, the different loans and programs. And each one has some specifics, you know, that are, that are attached to them. So it, it isn't just two and a half million dollars that can just get lent for any, any reason that you have to kind of have. And the IRP fund stretches greater than just the city of Fergus Falls.
That's true. That is all of Ottertail County.
So, you know, even though we, we hold, we, we hold that fund, and they're all kept separate. And, you know, the track record of that program has also been exceptionally good in terms of the repayment. You know, we have a good community that has used those funds and paid them back, you know, for a variety of different functions. So, you know, so if anybody wants to learn more about those programs, they can look on the website, they're, they're all listed, some. And we are kind of generally like that, that gap lender. The, when somebody comes, it's because they need that last. And, and I would say also the loan amounts have gone up, you know, where
Yes.
You know, the, for example, the facade loan programs, they used to be like 5,000 bucks would get you a lot. Now, now people are coming with signs of $50,000. You know, so it's, life has moved on a lot, so. With that, thank you, Clara. The next item on the agenda is, maybe you would probably just email out your presentation to the council so that everybody's got that. And we'll call upon Sam Herzog for a TIF transfer request.
Thank you, your honor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I will say, for Clara, it was a privilege to be able to listen to your community development. As a developer, we definitely look towards economic and community development, and growth plans are huge parts of what we look at in communities when we come in. So I would second the value of a growth plan for a community. So I want to discuss just kind of briefly what we're requesting here. And my hope is to make sure we're differentiating this request with the request for the council. to make sure we're differentiating this request with the request for the council to provide new TIF for a new project. Obviously, if that were the case, we'd be looking at what the project was going to be able to offer the community and what that request was going to look like. Here, what we're looking at is a request that Steve Kiper would have made probably the better part of a decade ago. His offer was to build 105 units, to provide affordability for 21 of those units in exchange for the TIF that was requested back then. The council at the time approved that request, and Steve, from my perspective as a different developer, did everything that he said he was going to on that project and received the TIF notes there. Each of these three TIF notes for the three buildings that were built have a handful of different, of years remaining depending on what year they were constructed. And at this point, Steve has kind of changed his MO, so to speak. He's started to do a lot more development in the Twin Cities, suburban markets, and he's continued to do a lot more larger-scale developments in larger communities. My company, Herzog Property Management, Unique Opportunities, we have a few different development groups, has continued to keep our focus more on rural, outstate, multifamily development. And so, when Steve mentioned that he was going to sell this, we work, he's working with Michael's Commercial Real Estate on this, they had reached out and we'd had some conversation last August. As you guys are aware, there was another developer. We were second when we made an offer to another ownership group. There was a handful of reasons, obviously, that was in front of you guys. They didn't get approval, so they chose to walk away from the purchase, and we got the call and said, hey, would you entertain going through this? This is really more your wheelhouse. The reason Steve had not chosen us originally is because we were going to come in and manage it. Originally, he had wanted to keep the property management because there's a profitability component there, and that was something that we weren't willing to do. We wanted to come in and manage, that's kind of what we do as a company. And so, we moved forward with this process. We spent the last three months going through our due diligence, working on the buildings. We're going to do a few improvements to the buildings if we would make the purchase. One of the primary improvements that we've identified is, even though the building's only a handful of years old, radon technology continues to improve, and we're going to be putting some different active radon systems in the building. And so, that's improving some of the parking lot issues. There's a few settling problems and some sidewalk issues there as well, so looking to make some active changes to the property as well. In addition, we want to be able to continue to offer that affordability component that the existing TIF for the original construction of those buildings offer. There's currently 21 tenants that receive a discount every month on their rent because of the tax increment financing. That's a requirement for the tax increment financing to stay in place for the remainder. If we purchased it, that requirement would stay there. Every year, we have to certify to the city that, and provide that rent roll certifying that we are meeting that requirement, and provide signed certifications from every single one of those 21 tenants. And so, I get that TIF can be contentious, and I'm happy to answer any questions here, but really what we're requesting is the ability to continue on a project that I think has been successful for the community of Fergus Falls, and to continue to improve it. The other aspect that I can offer the community of Fergus Falls, and this is more of a, I would say it's not a promise, it's more of a process that we would enter into. For us, we like to get to the point in a community where we have, we target getting to 250 new units developed in a community. As some of you are aware, we've built a couple complexes, the better part of a decade ago now, and then changed our focus to other communities. We, as a development group, have built over 2,000 units around the state of Minnesota now. We're currently building about 300 units a year. And so, for us, we've actually, there's a parcel directly across from this that is currently available for sale. We have the option to purchase that, and we've been in conversations with them. So, for us, an additional step in the process long-term of looking at more development in Fergus Falls is acquiring enough units where we have enough of a base that it brings our management and operating costs down for new development. And so, our intention, if we would fulfill this purchase and go through with that process, would be to continue to look at other viable development options, specifically the parcel currently owned by Service Foods right across the street or the two parcels they own there. We see that as being a potentially good fit for multifamily, and would anticipate over the next 12 to 24 months to explore what a development could look like on that parcel as well. And so, I'm not going to make a promise that it's going to look like this or it's going to look like that. The reality is, those types of developments take a lot of time, and we're looking at feasibility, a lot of components there to see if that would work. What we have in front of us is the request to simply transfer what I feel has worked well for the community and this development process to me for the last handful of years. And my commitment is that we'll continue to provide good service, we'll continue to provide the affordability for the tenants, and I think we'll continue to meet all the objectives that were originally intended for the project.
Thank you, Sam. Would somebody care to make the motion?
I'll make that.
Thank you Scott. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second your honor.
Thank you Scott. Does anyone have any questions of Sam? Thank you.
Will there be any job loss? I know, I think Shannon is the manager out there now, and I don't know what you're doing for, what's happening for maintenance.
Yeah.
How will jobs be handled in regards to, will it be your team coming in and there'll be some replacement?
Yeah, it's a great question. I told Shannon if she wanted a job with me, we'd love to have her stay. She's actually going to be moving, what she told me was, she's going to be going and managing their Alexandria development that they still own. We have another, we'll be hiring another manager for that position. We don't expect the amount of time to manage it or to do the maintenance to change, and all of those positions will be local. We already have local maintenance and management, so currently we're expecting two additional hires, which would roughly replace what they have there. I believe it'll actually probably be one more local position. I think we do a little more local maintenance than, excuse me, than the current property owner does.
Mr. Herzog, thank you.
Will you explain to me again the process of the 21 units that get, if you will, subsidy?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this is a housing TIF district, and any housing TIF district requires that 20% of the units be at 50% of median income, or 40% of the units be at 60% of median income. In this case, this development has 20% of the units at 50% of median income. And so, every year, median income changes, HUD releases, the numbers usually right around this time of year for the upcoming year at what that 50% number looks like. I believe for a single person, right now, it's in the low $30,000 range. For a family of four, it's in the low to mid $40,000 range. And so, for this development, 21 of those units have to be rented to people that make at or below that 50% mark. To do that as a developer, we offer rent incentives to allow those tenants to be able to afford those units, to be able to get below the 30% of their income being spent on rent is what we target. And so, if you look at the certifications, and I think you're probably the one, Bill, that gets those every year and would be able to share that information as well, but every year, 21 tenants sign stating that this is their income level. They provide documentation that that's their income level. The property owner is required to provide a rent roll showing where they live in the building, the unit that they're in, and the fact that they qualify for that unit. And so, that's kind of the process that we go through on a development like this, and it can be a big difference. I mean, depending on the unit, it can be $200 a month that they can save, which is, you know, can be 20, 25% of the rent for a unit like that.
And are you subsidized by the state of Minnesota, or someone to reduce those rents, or is that something the developer or the owner has to provide?
That's what the TIF is subsidizing. So, the TIF is what provides that. If there wasn't TIF, that requirement goes away, and those, and that's why this is really serious, because, you know, if we buy it, we're going to buy it with that TIF component. If Steve could go out to a larger national group like a REIT, they've made a lot more acquisitions in Minnesota in the last handful of years, they could buy it without the TIF. Basically, they would quit meeting the TIF requirements, the city would cancel the TIF district, and might not have to make those payments anymore, but there's 21 tenants that would get kicked out of that building because of the affordability component, or I shouldn't say kicked out, that would likely not be able to afford it anymore because they wouldn't receive those rent discounts. And so, I don't know that Steve would do that. He may at this point just keep the project if it doesn't transfer. I can't speak for him, but I can say that for the 21 tenants in the building, it's a huge component to be able to have the TIF in place for them for the next handful of years.
What are the rents there now?
The rents vary from the low to mid 800s to just over $1,000 a month right now.
And that's based on the size of the apartment?
That's correct. That's based on whether it's a one-bedroom, a two-bed, one-bath, or a two-bed, two-bath.
And what's the discount then to that person who may be renting one of those units?
I believe the current discount that the current manager is using is between $60 and $90 a month. As a company, our discounts tend to be a little bit higher. Our company-wide, for our management company, we average $175 discount, and so we would expect that the TIF discount would go up after we purchased the property.
Mr. Herzog, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Al?
Sam?
Yes.
Just the question that I have is, is there, I remember with the apartment complex that's built by the Veterans Bridge, that when, because I was on the planning commission then.
Yep.
When that was brought up and talked about, it was said it had to have X amount of subsidized apartments.
Yep.
But yet, it could go up to this amount. Is that true with this current apartment?
Could you clarify the question? When you say it had to have X amount, but it could go up to?
Yeah, it could go up to 50% of subsidized.
Of, I think that, I'm going to guess it's that 20% of 50% of median income number that's talked about a lot. So, that 20% unit is, for the projects I've been a part of, that's what it's been for all of them, whether in Fergus Falls or a different community. So, typically, it's always at 20%, but that 50% number refers to the income level of the tenants there. On the TIF projects that I've been aware of, unless they would select the 40% of 60% of median income, I have not been aware of any projects that vary from that 20%. If they use TIF in conjunction with another state program, the state program might have different requirements, but this specific project did not do that.
Because that was my, that's my concern is, or what I don't understand is that, let's say if you've got 10 or 20% that's receiving a discount on their rents, and then it goes to 30, 40% discount on the rents of what the clients are, that TIF isn't going to make that up.
Yeah, I mean
So, I guess the argument that I would like to, or the statement I'd like to say is, if it's truly funded by TIF, how's that gap going to work? If it goes up to higher subsidized apartments?
So, if we, so just, I want to make sure I'm clarifying what I'm hearing. So, you're saying if we would move the TIF discount to $150, how would that difference be made up to us?
It would be made up to, yeah, to you. Would it be the taxpayer, or?
No, no. TIF is a preset number, and that number doesn't change as soon as that number is paid back, then, I mean, that process is finished. The city has no liability there. Just looking at the simple math, the amount of TIF that is received still exceeds the amount of discounts that are given for us. So, they're still a net positive for us as the developer, which is a large component of why we're here today.
Thank you. I just, I'm just, I still don't know if we're on the same page here. It's just, I'm trying to figure out where that gap would come from, and if, let's say if that went to, because I remember the conversation in the planning commission many years ago.
Yep.
That it could go up to X amount, you know, it was quite a bit that it could be subsidized.
Yep.
So, you know, you're going to get X amount of dollars from this TIF.
Yep.
And where's that other money going to come from if you're going to keep it subsidized?
Well, I think that when you look at the total subsidy cost, it still doesn't exceed that TIF number. You know, if we offer 100, let's just say we offer $200, we don't have any projects in Minnesota that we offer more than a $200 TIF discount in. So, if we offered $200 to 21 tenants, that would be what, $40, $200 a month that we would be offering them, roughly $50,000 a year. Currently, I want to say the TIF is just under $100,000 a year, so there would still be a margin for the developer that would be positive for us to run that TIF program, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't, because what I'm looking at here, you got that owner who owns it right now, it's too much TIF. If you've got a surplus of TIF, then where's that money going?
Great question.
Into your pockets or an investment?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So, the purpose of TIF is to incentivize housing. A secondary benefit of housing TIF is to provide affordability. And so, when that developer came in front of you, the council, maybe not you specifically, 10 years ago, he said, if you give me this TIF, whatever that amount requested was, maybe a million dollars for the project, I will be able to build the project. They did an analysis for the project. They said, if it wasn't for TIF, but for TIF, this project wouldn't happen. And he received that. That became his right, because he worked his financing out, he worked all of it out, and he has a right to make a profit over a period of time. I can tell you, looking at this compared to other projects, he has not made an excessive profit on this. The sale price of this unit would, I mean, it has been a marginal at best profit, I would say, with what the sale price is for what his build costs would have been, you know, six, seven, eight years ago for the project. And so, the value of the TIF, though, is, was factored into what a reasonable return would have been for the project. If it hadn't been for the TIF, that project would never have happened, but that TIF is what enabled it to happen, and so, he has a right to that TIF. I've worked with a lot of projects around the state of Minnesota, and in general, if a developer, after five years, wants to sell the project to make whatever would have been a reasonable rate of return over five years, he sells that with the TIF to that next purchaser. The purchaser continues to meet those requirements, but that's how the developer gets paid for doing the development, because the city got what, when it gave them the TIF, the city got what it was supposed to get. It got affordable units for X amount of years, and it got a new development that wouldn't have happened without the TIF being in place.
Here.
Thank you. I just, if I could ask just a question. Go around in a circle here, but Scott can talk.
Grant, I think that it would be easier to understand this if we looked at what happens when the TIF ends. We've only got a few years left before this is done anyway. So, then, what becomes of those 21 units that are now being subsidized? Do they remain subsidized, and then you're just covering the cost, or is there another source for you to be reimbursed, you know, beyond this TIF money? I think that would help bring some clarity to this.
So, there's multiple communities in Minnesota that allow for TIF extensions. At the end of that period of time, I, as a developer, could come, and that TIF can be extended to up to 26 years. The community of Alexandria is an example of a community that allows for TIF extensions to allow for extended affordability. So, that would be an option. We could come back and we could say, hey, if the city is willing to extend the TIF, we can continue to extend the affordability. I would say it's not an incredibly common process, because usually cities, at that point, are ready to have that property join back to the tax roll, so they're able to reap the benefits of that project happening, but that would be one option. Option two is, there may be organizations like the HRA who would be able to provide some of that gap difference. That's something that's going to depend on the individual specifics of each tenant. The third option, and I would say this is the most common in developments like this, we know that sunset date right now for every one of those TIF districts. You know, they're roughly five years out. And so, right now, every single tenant that we're renting to, they know that in five years, they have, they'll have to find an alternative option for that affordability. And so, really, a lot of it is, communication is everything for people, and expectation is everything. People need to know what that process looks like. And so, if they feel like they have the information coming in, it's a different process. And so, that last year, we would expect tenants, some of them, to start moving off that, because there won't be, unless there was a different program in place, there won't be after that TIF rolls off, that additional subsidization or affordability for those tenants, but they'll, they know that now already, and there's been good communication, there will be good communication. And so, I think that's oftentimes with TIF project, what happens. In most communities, I would say, there's typically continual TIF projects happening. A lot of communities are doing one a year, one every other year, based on the developers that come in, and so that opens up new units for some of those families to move into that are coming from expiring projects too, because those limits are the same for those new projects that they would be for an older project as well.
Mike?
Mr. Herzog, I appreciate you being here today. You're aware of the two other companies came, or one company changed its name and came back a couple of times.
I am.
You're aware of that with us, so you kind of knew you were up against something here today, so I appreciate it a lot. Appreciate the amount of housing you put in the city. I don't know the exact number, but I hear Appreciate the amount of housing you put in the city. I don't know the exact number, but I hear your name a lot in what we do. I wanna break this down, just down to basics from business to business. That's what I do. That's what you do. We're just in a different entity. This TIF is gonna go on for five more years, no matter you buy it or not. If, I mean, if you don't buy it, these residents are in a good place. They're staying where they're staying. The TIF keeps going, doesn't change, can't be taken away by the city. Nobody's moved out of their houses. Nothing like that. Is that correct?
That is not correct. If the developer or a different buyer were to come in, they could choose to not meet the income requirements, not qualify for TIF, and the city would have the right to cancel the TIF district, but tomorrow, they could quit providing that affordability. Those tenants could receive a thirty-day notice to move out.
And you, you could do that as well, even if we approved the TIF today?
If, yes, I mean, I, I, I mean legally, anybody that owns that project could do that.
You bet.
I mean, I, I would certify that I won't do that, but anybody that owns the property would have the right to do that.
But we've got an owner now that went through the work, did what we asked him to do. He did the project. He's had a consistent background. He's done everything we've asked. He has never said that he doesn't wanna have the TIF continue on. So the sale could change that with that.
Well, no, no, because if I could do the sale with, and wanted to do it without the TIF transfer, I wouldn't be here today.
Yeah.
I would have just purchased it without the TIF and ignored it. I also would like to point out, I have another active TIF district of the same age, a 2017 project, that we meet the certifications on every single year. You can check with the city. And we would certify it just like we do our other active project in the city.
Yeah. So what it comes down to, when I look at it from a business standpoint, and you just kinda stated it, which I appreciate, is without the TIF, the deal would not happen. The deal would not, you would not purchase this without the TIF.
Personally, I wouldn't, because we're a TIF-based multifamily developer.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Herzog, thank you again. The outstanding TIF on this is some five hundred and sixty thousand bucks in a loss of real estate taxes to the city of Fergus Falls. I ran on balancing this budget, cutting spending, and increasing revenues. The present value, that's five hundred and sixty thousand, some three hundred and fifty thousand. If you had twenty-one units at a hundred and seventy-five dollars discount, that's thirty-six hundred a month, or forty-four thousand a year. The city's giving up a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. I see a gross, I just see it such a gross difference. It's very difficult for me to support a TIF continuation when the city can get a hundred and thirty a year, and you're giving up forty.
Yeah, can I provide another comment to that, though?
Yes.
Thank you. So I think that there's a couple of aspects to that that aren't fully being factored in. One, the city does not get the majority of that tax revenue. That's also the county, that's also the school, that's the total revenue that's purchasing. So it's not like all of that would go to the city. But regardless of that, I think that we gotta remember, TIF was given for that project to happen, okay? We're not changing the length of what was promised, the amount of what was promised. We're just allowing another developer to keep those same commitments in place, and we're, because the first developer did everything that he said he was going to do on the project. And I wanna remind you, without that TIF, there would not, in five years either way, unless the city would grant an extension, that is going to come back on the tax roll. If that TIF had never been given in the first place, that project would never have been built, and that would never have had the opportunity to come on the tax roll. If I had a brand-new project, and I said I was gonna build a hundred units if you guys gave me thirteen years of tax increment financing, and you guys said, yes, no, I mean, we'd have that conversation. But the reality is, the taxes from that, that would be paid back through the TIF, they're not gonna happen if that project isn't built. And so when I look at TIF as a whole, I see in a lot of these communities that have embraced it, you see all these projects that keep coming back on the tax roll because they keep doing tax increment financing. And over twenty, thirty, forty years, you absolutely have this massive increase to your tax roll because you continue to allow TIF to incentivize new projects to happen. If you look at Fergus Falls, there hasn't been as many TIF projects. I think because it can be a little bit harder to get potentially here. But now you don't have all these new ones coming onto the tax roll because of that too. And so it's important to remember affordability is one component of it, but just getting the projects to happen is a huge component of it too. You know, I think if you look at economic development in communities like Fergus Falls, it's one of the driving factors that helps bridge that gap, just like you have a revolving loan. Revolving loans typically don't work for the scale of these types of developments. But TIF does work, and TIF is only paid from the revenue, the tax revenue, that that new project generates. And that project has to prove that without that TIF, it could not happen.
I thank you for the clarification and my correction of a hundred and thirty-two thousand back to the taxpayer, not necessarily just Fergus. Fergus Falls was gonna run about fifty, fifty-five percent of that total, so.
I don't know that number, but you could be right.
So at that point, we're still over the water. Cities, the government entities here, the school, the county, and the city is giving up a hundred and thirty-two thousand. You're paying out forty-four. The city's gonna take about sixty, sixty-five percent, you know, sixty-five thousand, and you're only giving up forty-four. I appreciate the initial TIF project. And I'm not here to express to those people who utilize this subsidy, I don't wish them bad at all. I'm looking at the city of Fergus Falls, the budget we have. The county is short. The school is short, which is somewhat state-dictated as well. It's very difficult for me with the information I have here. But I appreciate your wonderful presentation.
No, I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
I think Jim.
One thing I just, sitting here thinking, whether we give you the chance to transfer that over or not, that TIF is still there for another five years. So it doesn't make any difference. It's still there if the present owner continues to own.
We're not changing the amount, I mean, it's not gonna change the budget for the city.
We already got.
Correct.
So.
But also too, it sounds like you're looking at improving or increasing the amount of, you know, reducing the amount of rent versus, you know, who currently owns it. Am I understanding that?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the target. You know, we'll have to get in there, and a lot of it's supply and demand based, but yes. Excuse me. We don't have any discounts that are that low. I don't know if it's just company differences. I don't know how he does it with a discount that low. But our discounts across our company are higher than that.
Thank you for being here. I think it's important that, I mean, we're talking a lot about economic development, and I agree with Mr. Layton. We have to be careful on making sure we're not a burden to our taxpayers. But we're not, by doing this, in my view, we're not increasing any burden to our taxpayers. And I think it's really important that, like you said, Fergus is lagging in some development areas, or you alluded to. And we have to show that we are gonna work with these developers that come in. And I know you've spoken in the past about how Fergus rents are lower than Alec and other communities you're in. And so it's harder for a developer to come in and cash flow in Fergus. And I think it's, I think TIF is one of the tools in our toolbox that we need to be more willing to use when appropriate, and when it is, it meets the but-for test, like you referred to. And I think we need to concentrate on that. And my other concern is, is I do believe this decision sends a message to other developers that may need an exit from a development that they start. Not everyone goes in with a ten-year ownership plan, and we need them to realize, you know what, Fergus is gonna allow you to make that exit when reasonable, and it's not gonna be a bigger burden on our taxpayers. So I guess from my perspective, I'm looking at this not as how you are as a landlord or any of those other things, but this is money already on our tax rolls. It's money that wouldn't have been here if this hadn't been given in the first place. And we need to send the message that we will work with people when they wanna transfer, if that's needed.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that comment, because I think that there's a huge reality to that. I mean, there were comments around the state based on some of the happenings with the previous purchaser last fall. And it does send a message, people are much less interested in getting TIF if they feel like they're not gonna have the option to transfer that. You know, typically on developments, people are looking at five- to seven-year exit plans. We're a little bit less traditional. We typically hold long-term. But a lot of people are looking at five, seven, maybe ten at the very most. Like, that's how they're running their pro formas. And so if they don't feel like they can sell that with the remaining TIF, I mean, it would definitely be detrimental to a lot of developers looking at projects.
I was gonna say, we need to kinda move on.
All I'm gonna say is economic development and housing go hand in hand. They're not, they don't, they don't, the economic developer doesn't do housing, and the community developer, I guess, does the housing. But they work hand in hand. If you don't have housing, we're not gonna get any economic development. So we have to figure out how to make this balance. And I know that if we vote for you and it goes through, you're gonna look at Fergus Falls to develop some more in. And it'll just show that somebody else will come into it. If we have economic development coming with jobs, it's gonna really help hand in hand. They're not together, but they're hand in hand, so.
Thank you.
With, no, with that.
One final question. What's the vacancy rate in Fergus Falls?
I would say our vacancy rate is currently around three and a half, four percent.
Out of how many?
We currently manage about two hundred units in town.
And you say three percent?
Uh, yeah, three and a half to four, yep.
Right. With that, we'll take a vote to move this to the council meeting on Monday. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It was Al, Mark, and Mike. So the motion is approved to move it to the council meeting on Monday. The next item on the agenda is a resolution of support for SF 2115, the Heritage Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is very quick. This is a resolution of support that will be going to support a bill that would be changing the tax credit program. Did we skip something? Oh, IUP's first, then the letter? Okay. I'll come back to the letter there. Okay, so this is coming to you live from Planning Commission. I'm gonna give you some background on what's been happening at the state level with cannabis sales. The general license application window for, through the Office of Cannabis Management closed March sixteenth. OCM finished its draft rules, submitted those to an administrative law judge on March twenty-fourth. On April seventh, that judge approved the draft rules with no changes. April fourteenth, which was Monday, the rules were published in the state register, and those are now effective. What that means now is that the Office of Cannabis Management can begin issuing licenses. So what that is gonna look like for us here locally is that we're gonna start getting requests for local certification for zoning compliance. We have had discussions with two local businesses who have gone through the licensing process and are prepping for having licensure approved. Therefore, in order for them to continue operating, they have been seeking interim use permits, which is what we're gonna be discussing here this morning, as quickly as possible in the interest of time. Following the local certification, so when the state reaches out and says, "Are they good for zoning? Check this box." Then they can start getting their licensure, or at least their pre-approval, and the city can begin issuing retail registrations. Once retail registrations are in place for local businesses, they may begin sales. So that's the timeline that we're working with currently. All right, so the Planning Commission heard two applications for interim use permits. The first was for an IUP for cannabis sales at 112 Washington Avenue. That is the old Rainbow Cleaners building. That building is zone B3. The surrounding uses are mixed commercial, as well as some residential on upper levels. What has been recommended or requested through the permitting process is that they are not making any external renovations. At this point, it's internal only, so the outside of the building is not changing. What I'm gonna do is, can you go to the next one? I am gonna run through the proposed findings that staff and Planning Commission have agreed to as part of their recommendation to the council. So these are, maybe I'll give a little bit of background on interim use permits. We use the same criteria for an interim use permit that we would use for a conditional use permit. The difference is simply there is a time limit on the interim use permit. So we go through the same findings of fact that we would go through with a conditional use as we do, or with an interim use as we do with a conditional use. So if you've seen these findings before, that's because it's the same as conditional use. So first, will not be, the project is not gonna be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the neighborhood of the city. Staff and Planning Commission found that the criteria has been met. The state and local laws regulate the operation of a cannabis business, and the business in its application agrees and certifies that it is going to follow the rules, all applicable rules of state and local laws. Number two, it will be harmonious with the general and applicable specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and code provisions. As I mentioned earlier, the city does not have a comprehensive plan. However, criteria is still met because the planning, or the city council did put in place an avenue for cannabis sales in the B3 district through the interim use permit, so code provisions do exist. Number three, the project will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be compatible or similar in an architectural and landscape appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and will not change the essential character of that area, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Staff and Planning Commission again say criteria is met. Only interior renovations are proposed, which do not generate enough of an effect to affect surrounding property values. Operations are of a retail nature, which is not out of character with the area. Four, it's going to be served adequately by existing essential public facilities and services, streets, fire protection, police, et cetera. Criteria is met. The building is currently in existence. It's not a new building going in. It is, therefore, as far as we are aware, adequately served by public facilities and services. And this business is in active discussion with our building department to ensure that codes are met in such a way that those services remain effective. Number five, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be hazardous or detrimental to any person's property or general welfare because of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. Once again, the criteria is considered met. This is, this is a recommendation for retail use. Only retail activities are proposed. There will be no manufacturing, no consumption of cannabis products on site. And as a reminder, the city of Fergus Falls also says no cannabis is to be consumed in public, so that means on a public sidewalk, et cetera. So somebody can't purchase a product in the store, walk out, and immediately begin using it. That is not allowed.
I got one question. When it says odors, I mean, when you go into these stores, the, there's a good odor in that store that's not smoke, or just the odor from the cannabis.
Sure.
Does that not?
So through our registration process, we do have the applicants addressing odor through an odor control plan.
Okay. I didn't, I wanted to make sure. I'm not, it's, it's the people upstairs I'm concerned, you know?
Well, and we have, I mean, there are two active businesses right now selling very similar products. The difference is just going to be, you know, we have not had received complaints on those businesses. Okay. Six, vehicular ingress and egress to the property, which does not create traffic congestion. Again, this is an existing building. It has had commercial uses before. We have not received complaints at the city as to traffic creation or issues getting a vehicle to the business. Will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of natural, scenic, or historic features of major importance. Once again, staff and Planning Commission agree that the criteria has been met. The property itself is not historic, does not include any exterior alterations, and the site is located at a sufficient distance from the Otter Tail River, which arguably could be a, you know, a scenic area, or the historically designated river in, that it would be considered a negligible impact. So specific to the IUP, the interim nature of the use has been defined through city code, which is that these uses may be in place in a B3 zone up to five years. So that's where that five years comes in. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this project. Neighbors were notified within a three hundred and fifty-foot radius of the property that this interim use was going to be before the Planning Commission. They were given sufficient time to provide comments to the city in leading up to the meeting, and they were also invited to come and speak at the meeting. For this case in particular, there was one neighbor who did come to the public hearing. He asked a couple clarifying questions. And then we also had Councilmember Layton, who was at the meeting, similarly asked some clarifying. clarifying questions. The constituent, Grant, Grant Davenport, who owns a business at 114 Washington Avenue, his questions were about the process following the five-year limit on the interim use. He wondered what could happen at that five years. The answer that was given was that the business could reapply at that point. And he also was, expressed some concern specifically about the, the wall on the side of that building, which we have had issues with in the past. It has been stabilized, but the building owner was here during that meeting, and he said he was going to continue making improvements to the building, including the wall. And with that, that constituent sat down. So I don't know if you want to stop and pause and ask questions about this one, or run through the second one as well.
I think maybe do them one at a time.
Okay. So the recommendation that was made from the Planning Commission to the city council is to approve the interim use permit with no conditions. The option does exist for council to place conditions, however. The reasoning that Planning Commission and, and staff came up with for not placing conditions is that there are suitable regulations in place both at, both at the state and the local level that are covering most instances that a condition would place. And then just as a reminder, what we're talking about this morning is, is the interim use. They still have to go through the registration process, but this is specific to the zoning. So we're not here to adjudicate too much about how the business is actually operating. This is to ensure that it is fitting in the zone correctly.
Is that, would somebody care to make a motion?
I, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Laura, you had a question?
Yes, quick question. I did have a business owner reach out to me right by that location, and they had stated, according to the website for the cannabis planning and zoning for Minnesota, it states that no cannabis dispensary may be located or operated within 100 feet of a church or residence. Is that accurate information?
Inaccurate. Churches are not considered as part of that.
What about residents?
Also inaccurate.
Is there a limit to that at all for?
We've placed buffers locally, so we have buffer zones of 350 feet from a daycare halfway house or school. Am I missing any?
Or park.
Or, well, a park that has a, an attraction for children.
Children component.
Two fifty.
On the state level?
Two fifty, thank you.
On the state level, there's no?
Not that I'm aware of. The state allowed for specific buffers around the things that we just mentioned, school, daycare, not, not residences.
Okay.
But also, we don't have any residential areas where I think that would ever come into play, where we have the, where we're allowing the zoning locations.
So the apartments upstairs would not qualify underneath that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a provision I'm aware of.
I think to clarify Laura's question, it's not that it's near residence, it's, it's zoned commercial. So it's not that it's, it's because the zoning is commercial. If the zoning was residential, then it's not allowed.
Right.
So it's, it's not so much.
Thank you, yes.
There happens to be residential in a commercial zone. I believe that's very significant, but I think that answers that question.
Thank you, Scott.
I had a conversation with the same person that I think, Ms. Jobe, we all got that email, I believe. And the conversation I had yesterday, some of the things that were raised were shortage of parking on that road in general with overnight tenants an issue, and their concern with the higher traffic on that road in general for parking. I don't know if that road can be looked at for two-hour parking or no overnight parking. I don't know if that's something Public Works can look at. That's one concern. Also, the same planning and zoning quote for Minnesota was given to me. I, I totally believe that that's, I mean, I was on Planning Commission when we looked at this. I don't think that 100 feet exists, but obviously it's out there somewhere. Can we get some clarification on that before Monday night? Because, I mean, we need to know where the general public is seeing this, so we can be able to make sure that we're not missing something. I don't think we are.
I, I did not receive the same email that apparently all of you received, which.
I can send that to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Ideally, that would have been something that would have come to the city as part of the public process through the Planning Commission, so that it could have been read into the record.
Right.
So just for future, if you do receive something from a community member that's relevant to a case that the Planning Commission is hearing, we have an avenue for, for making that heard.
And I think it came yesterday afternoon, so it was post Planning Commission, so we'll get that to you.
Okay.
Al?
I was also contacted by a, a couple, and I'm assuming that would have came up last Tuesday in the Planning Commission, what, maybe what that letter was, but maybe it wasn't presented. I don't know.
I did not receive any written communications.
The letter only came yesterday.
Okay. But I didn't know if it was ever brought up last Tuesday at the meeting at, what was it, 5:15, or a week ago yesterday.
I don't know what the letter is, so I don't know.
I, I heard the same concerns.
Any other questions regarding the Sugar High application?
I do. Um, I think that it'll be worth our time and effort to then propose conditions if we're going to have conditions, because that, that's where this needs to happen. If we're gonna propose any conditions, we should do that now, and then we either pass a motion to proceed, you know, with conditions or, or not. There's probably several varieties of conditions that could be applied, but the council has specifically given the authority to do this. In our statutes, the user of the permit is subject to any conditions that the council deems appropriate. That's from our statutes, 154.021. So anything that we want to put on this as a council, regardless of what the Planning Commission says, regardless of anybody else's ideas, whatever the council wants to put on here that we feel is appropriate, we can attach as a condition.
That you feel and the applicants also feel is appropriate?
Well, we would propose it, and then they either accept the permit or they don't, right? But it, we can, we need to put it out there if we're gonna ask for something. So now's the time to do that. There are several that I would like to suggest, and maybe it'd be best to take them one at a time. But the first one would be just on the timing. The typical interim use permit, by definition, is considered a temporary use, and I think that that's appropriate, and that's why it exists. The idea is to give those businesses that use an interim purpose, use interim permit, you know, a chance to find a place that's more appropriate, and so that's how it fits in this case. I think five years is too long to use this as a, say, a test case on this, as it's all brand-new and the city and the state is still making up the rules. I think if we went one or two years, that's plenty. And I would allow those, others on the council to weigh in as to whether we would do one or two, but my suggestion would be that we pick, you know, a one- or two-year maximum time, and maybe we could look at that condition and then move on to other options. Any other comments from anybody?
I would say list your, list what you believe, and go through the conditions and then.
All right, then I'll suggest one year.
Just for clarification, it would be renewable still after the one year, and we could just change conditions if needed based on the experience? Is that what you're looking for? Because I don't, I mean, I don't know that there, from a temporary location perspective, we don't have a lot of options where people with our, our setbacks, where people could relocate to. So I guess if we're looking at it from the perspective of, if we need to change conditions, if we're, if we're doing this as a learning experience, I guess that'd be one thing. But looking at relocation, there are very few places within the city limits that these businesses can fall, and we do have to allow them to happen, even though we may not personally want them to happen. We, I mean, and I think we talked, I talked with that about the person that wrote this letter yesterday, and, and they even recognized, like, our hands are somewhat tied. It's a conditional use that is allowed. We just can put conditions on it, and I, I agree with that piece.
I think it's important to point out that there are locations in town where they can go with no conditions. That's what B6 exists for.
Right.
So this isn't out of line, in my opinion.
I agree with Mr. Kwame. We're in a, the state of Minnesota's got, has given us no direction. There's 87 counties going through the same thing. There's probably 87 communities such as ours, county seats that are going through this. I agree with the one year. What happens if the state changes it? We've given them five years. I agree with the one year.
This is the next call.
Can you talk about the renewal process? One year?
Well, they would be applying again.
I think the reason that we landed at five years was because of the investment necessary to, you know, obviously open the business, and that if you, if you're gonna live in this world that you can only operate for one year, then, you know, that's kind of, it's a very iffy, iffy scenario to live in, is that you've only got a license for one year to operate.
And, Your Honor, I agree. We, when we talked this through the Cannabis Committee, we talked about the investment it's gonna take to do this. Not that I'm in favor of this, I'm just saying that this, it's opportunity for people to do business. You're gonna invest a lot in that building, and then we're only gonna give them one year, and then we could disallow it, or we could just extend it. That's where we spent a lot of time doing it, on this five-year plan. And so I, I'm not in favor of one year because, because of that, because of the investment part of it. I don't like any of this, but we have to look at the whole picture of everything, what goes together on this, so.
And there is, I, I'm just gonna say, there is significant investment that is going into any business that's going to be operating as a cannabis retailer that is coming down from the state through building code. So there, at this point in time, as far as I'm aware, does not exist a building in Fergus Falls that would not require the landlord or the owner to make some fairly significant changes to the security, the, the door operational systems, et cetera, to a building.
Your Honor?
Al?
Just one comment, too. I think that I would also agree with the one year, just due to the fact that there's a business there that's been there for 65 years. If that affects them, they could be out, too. So you gotta look at the existing businesses who have proven track record, what they have done, and I don't want them to have a negative impact on that current business that's been there, or the other businesses down that street.
Mike, you had a question?
I wanna echo the same thing. You know, you've got a longstanding staple in our city, 65-year business, which we appreciate very much, and, and I want them to continue. And I'm not saying that having this next door won't do that. I'm also with Mr. Kwame in, in understanding why you want a one- or two-year. But when I look at this from a businessman, a business point, investments, if I put up a big structure, I do something, there's a lot of time, work, and effort in it. So as much as I probably would do the one- or two-year, Scott, Mr. Kwame, I, I just can't go there because, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a lot of criteria in there that if they're messing up, they're not doing things right, we can come back as a council at day 10, two years, three years, and we can pull this thing and say, hey, you, you didn't do what you said you would do. Is that correct?
That's correct. With an interim use permit, it also requires an annual review to ensure that they are meeting all of those requirements. It's not a, it's not a new application, but it is an internal review that occurs.
I appreciate that. Does that annual review get presented to the council, or is it just staff that look at that, or how does it roll? We don't know yet, I suppose.
I'm, I think we, we can do it to the council, but it's been to staff in years past. And, and the only interim use permits that we have currently operational, well, that we recently had, were for the former ShopCo building for use as a, as a storage facility.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of my position on it, Your Honor, with it. I thi, I think the real question I wanna pose, and if you don't want me to get off track, if you wanna vote on this, we can do this.
Well, I think Scott had additional kind of conditions.
Go ahead.
Well, I do have additional conditions, but I think that to try and take them as a package would prove to be pretty unwieldy, so maybe I'll take this approach. Given the resistance to going with one year and the high investment, I'm willing to look at a two-year time, and I'll make a motion to that effect that we proceed with a two-year.
We have a motion on the floor.
And that is?
Don't we?
Yep. We have a motion on the floor to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay, so then my motion would be to amend, and then we can vote on the amendment.
But if you're gonna offer another kind of three or four conditions.
I'd offer three or four amendments, then.
Then, yeah. I, I think it would just be easy to list what your potential conditions are.
Do we take the one motion off the table and put his motion on?
Uh, I think it would be easier just to know what all the conditions are.
Let's hear those conditions, yes.
Let's get it out there so that, you know, then people.
I think as a package, it'll get to be really difficult, but okay. For what it's worth, I'd be willing to look at two years and go that route. I think that the question of residential impact is an important one. And the condition that I would like to see is that there would be no residential component in the building where the business is in place. So, you know, in this case, there's apartments above it, and the owner can choose to either rent those apartments or not. If they want the business, then have the business. If they want apartments, then have apartments. But I don't see having residential in the same building as compatible with anything that we would like to see happen. So that would be a specific condition, that there'd be no residential in the building. I would like to see an, a condition that the business must have the approval of the adjacent neighbors. For example, in our residential areas, if you wanna have chickens in your backyard, you've gotta get a permit for that and get the approval of your neighbors. If one neighbor says, no, I don't like chickens, sorry, then you, no permit for you. I think this to, is exactly the similar situation. If you don't want this next door, you should be able to say no. I think that we can limit the hours of operation. That's specifically called out in the statute, and I, I would like to suggest hours of operation from 10 to 8, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Most of the downtown businesses are closed by 8 p.m., and having these open later, I don't believe serves any positive purpose. And there's one other thing that I guess is just a real puzzlement, and that's where there's an inconsistency in the statute, that on the one hand says there's no consumption. And you spoke of that earlier, Clara, where this is strictly for retail, and there's no onsite consumption, there's no way you can just take it and use it. And yet, the statute also allows the business to sample products and allow their employees to sample products, and it calls out the process for that. Well, sampling is consumption. So there's a legal question there that I think blows up this whole deal. If we can say no sampling and make that a condition, then that rules out the consumption, and yet, then the legal question is, well, the statute says we can, and the whole deal is screwed up. And that's maybe a question for Rolf to look into and for the state to figure out, but there's some real issues with that. Perhaps some others had some suggestions for conditions? I'll stop there, I could go on. But those are probably enough to try and throw into one package.
Mike, you have a comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Kwame, I appreciate the work you put into this. I think there are certain things, maybe people will see us maybe not agree on economic development, but I bet you today you and I are lockstep as a council and united as we could be. So I think the work you put in was great. I, I wanna come at this to add to him just a little bit. I wanna commend the businesses that have been doing the, the work they've been doing up to this point. We've had Elevate, we've had Sugar High. They've been, I think, great in the city, and that's coming from me. That's, so I, they've done a good job. I think what really holds me up here is now we have moved one of those establishments, or we're gonna move them, under a multifamily apartment setup. And there's three in there, right, Clara? Is that right?
Three active. Yeah, I'm not sure how many units are actually up there.
This, this changes, this just changes the game for me. It, it makes it so difficult for me to take three people's home of residence, their home, and then put a business that we're not so sure of, that has consumption of a, a Schedule I class drug, that is still a federally illegal drug. It's very difficult for me to do that to three families that live above there. Now, they have the choice to move out, they have the choice to do whatever, and others move in. But us as a city, we've gotta look at residents, too. Even though it's a business district, we have to. And one of the things that even kind of solidifies this for me is even the state of Minnesota looks at consumption of cannabis in multifamily, three or more apartments. They look at it differently than other things, and they have more stringent rules, and they have more things that go with that. So even the state of Minnesota is kind of telling me in the back of my head, this seems kind of unusual, it seems not right. I, I want these businesses to succeed in what they do, but I just, I would like the condition that Mr. Kwame came across with, that I don't wanna see the multifamily connected to the same tax code document property that this, this is attended with.
Any other comments?
I have one, Your Honor. On, on the residential, I, I personally probably wouldn't wanna live in that location, I guess. I, I can see the concern, but that being said, is that everyone's individual right? And is it something where, I, I'm concerned about. And is it something where, I, I'm concerned about three tenants that, if this goes forward, have no place to live? And if, if it's something where these tenants are aware and there's a disclosure, I don't know if it's our business to decide if people are comfortable with where they live. And I guess that's, I don't know, from a public health concern, has there been anything coming down from the state? And what can you speak about, with Mr. Mortensen, he's accurate, that there are guidelines for three or more buildings. Can you speak to that at all?
Um, right this morning, no.
Okay.
I would wanna do some more thinking and research about how to respond.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Your Honor, one last question. I can't sit in the, I cannot drink beer in the alley. Is there a city ordinance? Does Kyle have any direction? Can I smoke weed in the alley?
You may not smoke weed in the alley. And technically, you should not drink beer in it, either.
Based on the letter that you did not receive, they were talking about loitering in the alley, and they smell cannabis now. Now
Is that something that we can request, that the police chief comes on Monday night? I think that would be helpful, to be able to speak to that.
I would recommend that this property owner call the local law enforcement.
This might be just a little bit outside the IUP in regards to that local store, 'cause we have an issue with another store as well, right? If I'm smoking in the alley, or if I'm smoking on the sidewalk, or if I'm smoking in the restroom. I, I'm just trying to figure out what the law is in Minnesota, what the law is in the Fergus Falls in regards to public assumption.
You can come back with language from the Clean Air Act.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I think that's a law enforcement issue as opposed to a
Yep.
a neighborhood, you know, issue. But
Your Honor, I think that the law is that you can sit in your car and smoke, and you can sit in your yard and smoke, in your house. I think that's about the only things where you can smoke this stuff at legally.
Well, some cities could allow public consumption. We have
Yeah. I mean, I'm talking about us.
So, we have an ordinance in Fergus Falls that wouldn't allow it in public spaces, parks, sidewalks, streets, alleys in this case. But certainly, other communities could decide that they're gonna allow it in those public spaces.
And again, I was looking for clarification. Thank you.
Your Honor, in regards to one of the conditions that Mr. Kwame brought up, the sampling versus consumption, I think that that is a legitimate legal question. I guess I would recommend that we don't look at that tonight and have that on the agenda, that specific aspect on Monday, when we could have legal counsel on that, if Mr. Kwame's open to that.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that.
Right.
And so, I'm asking that as a question.
I think the rules clarify it, but I would wanna look into that further. The rules that just got approved.
And, and I'm assuming, just in the interest of time, this kind of like conversation would be applicable to Elevate as well as Sugar High?
That's what I expected. I thought we'd be talking about both.
Yep. So, with that, we do have a motion.
One, one second, Clara. I just wanna get a clarification. You've talked before that when an application comes in front of us, you know, for prior stuff, now for this, this is application for the building. There's the property owner, and then there's the business owner, right? And if anybody has more than 10% ownership in that business, are they to be on that application?
For a zoning application, no, we don't have any requirements in that respect.
That will be more for the
That would be for the, yeah, you're thinking of the registration process.
So, still in this zoning application, does that application have to be completely filled out, every entity in it to be looked at?
Um, the only entities that we're asking for are the applicant, and that can be somebody who owns the building, somebody who's planning to move into the building, what have you, and then the, if they are not the building owner, then the building owner. Those are the only entities.
And they need to fill that out completely, the applicant that's gonna be in the business? Is that correct?
Yes. They and the building owner can do it together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we know if this one's filled out 100% accurate? Has it got every piece of information of the applicant on it?
Yep.
Does it have their telephone number and their email for the applicant?
Um, it's in your packet.
It's in, it's in your packet, and yes, it
Well, we have that on file, if you would like it.
But do we have it on the application?
If it's not on the application in front of you, then it's not on the application.
Okay.
But it's on file in the office, if you'd like it.
Yeah. Can we get a verdict on that, Your Honor? Is it on the application?
The property owner, name and address and contact numbers are on there. The applicant information contains name and address, but no phone number or email. For Sugar High.
Um, I guess the applicant is here. I know we need to move on with this process today, but I do feel like if the person is in the audience, we should at least give them the opportunity to speak or answer questions, if, if, Your Honor, you're open to that.
Sure.
If they want to.
Oh, yeah, sure. Just, I'll just take a couple minutes. I'm Emily McKeon, the owner of Sugar High. Thank you for your proactivity and your speed in putting together brand-new industry rules and regulations. One clarification I wanted to make was on the timeline that Clara spoke about, just so you all understand from the state level. So, I, I don't wanna assume that everybody's as versed as I am, obviously. So, everything Clara said was accurate as far as the issuance of licenses, but the timeline, more accurately, for us as an applicant, because we are not social equity applicants. And what that means is that the state of Minnesota created a program for individuals and applicants who have been adversely impacted by the, by marijuana, you know, crimes, have a conviction, all these things. We didn't meet that criteria. Essentially, we're just regular folk applying. So, the state, now that the judge has issued these rules and regulations into being official, the first people who are gonna be able to be licensed in the state are social equity applicants. And I think there are 600 going out across the state. The type of license we applied for is not capped, and it's not subject to a lottery, so luck of the draw. The timeline that the OCM has published is that we won't even be reviewed. Our application won't be reviewed until May or June. And then there's that whole process after that. And so, it's really in alignment with where the city's at, city to city. So, with that being said, I wasn't sure if this was gonna be an opportunity today or Monday. As far as the conditions, I'm open to conditions, personally, as a business owner. The timeline, as far as the length of the IUP, I'm very open to having, I'm flexible there. You know, I, I guess, I like this, I want this to be expedited, but I don't really care so much about the timeline. The only issue that I have so far, clarification on the consumption, we would not allow sampling. We would be in compliance with local law that states no consumption in public. We would be considered a public property, not private. We don't own that building, okay? I don't wanna go down that road, okay? I want this to be as clean and fluid and streamlined and respectful as possible at this point. I checked out of this fight a long time ago, okay? That being said, the residential part, I have a kind of an issue with, because there's nothing at the state level that requires that. So, this would very significantly impact our ability to operate. So, I think that this should not just be something that's, you know, that contingency or that condition to be placed on this, because that would completely thwart all of our effort, our humongous investment that we are going to make into building this building, to be appropriate according to state law. So, of all those things that Scott mentioned, I mean, I just wanna be clear, I'm very amenable and open to having the conversation. I just, I do wanna keep this going in the trajectory. The state anticipates regular, general applicants to be up and going by September. So, I just wanna try our best together to make sure that this is as streamlined as possible. That's really all I have. But I'm open, flexible. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Emily. So, basically, to kind of draw to some sort of conclusion, then, we, the, I think, are we in favor of a, of a five-year with the annual, the annual review and the ability of, the fact that within the IU, if, if a business goes, steps out of, out of compliance, then the city can move in and shut them down anyway?
Again, I, when I was at the public meeting, this, and I, I lose track of this, we are now approving the location, we are not approving the business.
Correct.
So, one to five years, I understand, if the building owner does something to fall out of compliance, this can, the IUP can be called, if you will. It's the business, pardon me, it's the building owner that we're working with, with IUP.
It's kind of
So, it would be the condition of the building, right?
It's both.
It's a use, it's an interim use. So, you'd really more be looking at how the business is operating.
Within the building, within the zone.
And again, as you explained before, interim use goes with the business. Conditional use goes with the property.
Right.
So
So, the, the reason that we went with an IU as opposed to a conditional was because what Scott said. The IU is to the, the business, if, if we put conditional uses on that building, then, you know, if Sugar High moved out, somebody else can move in and take over that lease, as it were, and operate a cannabis-based business in it. But if Sugar High move out in three years, then it's, it's dead in that building.
So, this is really, if you will, approving both the owner and the retailer, if they're licensed by the state.
Yep. And giving rules of which they operate by. And if they, and if they break those rules, obviously, then the city has the right to withdraw the conditional other use permit.
I agree with Kwame. I think there's a lot of discussion that could be made here. I don't know if we can do it in one night, one day, out of efforts of time. I appreciate the needs to go forward.
Another one to go through yet. And, and also, this is, this is gonna come up on Monday evening as well.
No, I understand. Yep. But I hope that's enough time. I hope Ralph is here, and I hope Kyle is here.
Yep.
Your Honor, I just, I think that we, I understand there's a motion on the table, but I do think, looking at this as a lump, either pass without any conditions or some conditions, I think it's gonna be hard, so I don't know how we approach this the best.
Yeah. Neither am I, really.
Your Honor, I just, I wanna go back again. I need to know who I am, who is the, the principal owner of this? Are they, do they have the information on the application? We heard from Ms. McKeon here, which I appreciate very much, and, and the stuff she's done over the last number of years. But she's not the name on the application. And is all the criteria there, that has to be the very first step, so I know for sure who I'm dealing with, so I can reach out to them, talk to them, so we can go with that? Wherever I go with my business assets, whatever it is, the state knows, the city knows, the county knows, and they can reach me in all directions. I wanna make sure that this doesn't go through the process, and we don't have the principal owner and the accurate information that was required on the application to go forward.
And, and I told you that, I mean, it's in the packet. And obviously, the property owner has got full name, address, phone number, and email address. Sugar High has name, obviously, owner, you know, address where they're gonna operate, but does not have a phone number or email address. Elevate has that all completed.
I guess, I, I wouldn't have looked at that as an incomplete application, seeing as the application, as it was being submitted, was, there was constant communication from the applicant. So, we have all of that information on file. Whether or not it was physically written on the application, I guess, to me, doesn't indicate that the application is incomplete. We, we look at, I, I mean, I like to look at things as holistically as possible, especially when I'm in communication with the applicant.
I appreciate that very much.
And the, the Sugar High owner's email is actually on the form, under where she signed it.
Can I, can I, can I please, are you talking about the IUP application?
Yeah.
I filled that out, and it asked for my home address, and all the information should be on there, is it not?
I don't think, Emily, I don't think that's the one we're looking at. It's, it's more for the location that someone else filled out, so, no, it's not, not one with yours.
Oh.
It has Jasmine's name on it.
Right.
Just for precedent's sake, Your Honor, from
I think a phone number missing is not worthy of kind of rejection of a kind of an application.
That information from Monday afternoon, please.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think the point that is hanging me up here, there's no way I can vote in favor of going forward with this unless the conditions are a part of the motion. And so, if you wanna go ahead and call for the vote on the motion, we can kill that, and then start over with a new motion, including the conditions.
I think that would be wise. So, we'll call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye. There are none. All those against, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Would somebody care to make a new motion?
Motion is defeated.
Motion is defeated.
Let me just, let me just ask a quick question. Where, I mean, if we're looking at, you know, Ms. McKeon said she was open to, you know, the length of time, you know, can we, can we look at two years versus one?
I'd be comfortable with that. I don't know how others feel.
Your Honor? Personally, I think we need to do more work to this before we start voting on anything at this point. We need to get together in a work session and hammer this whole thing out.
I think this kind of is our work session, isn't it?
We're gonna, we're gonna sit here all morning and not get any place.
And do we have timelines on interim uses?
I would also just, yeah, there's a 60-day timeline on this, and the, there, if the city has not made a decision at the end of that 60 days, the IUP is approved. So, I think this, and this goes maybe back to my, my presentation earlier, when I was talking about building, building trust. This has been a conversation for months and months and months, ever since we knew that this was coming down the pipeline from the state. So, you've had previous councils and previous planning commissions who have hashed out all of this information before, and has given you these processes in place in order for you to have all of the information that you ostensibly would need in order to make your decisions. So, this conversation, I mean, all of this public process all took place through the planning commission. They've given you recommendations. It is entirely within your right to, to place further conditions, but I think going back and, and re-adjudicating every piece of this is, is not gonna be efficient time-wise.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. To do this as a two-year, being that the applicant is open to that, renewable at two years, with an annual review by staff that is brought to the council, with the understanding that there'd be no sampling on the premise, and that the hours are limited to 10:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I would also, there's one other one that I'm trying to look at here. And then I would require that the building owner, if residences were going to be allowed above the building, ensure that the proper things were done for ventilation to not impact the residences above the store. And I would offer that motion.
Do we have a second, Bill?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Aye.
I think we need a show of hands, I think, if we could. All those in favor, say aye, raise a hand.
Ayes.
Four. And all those against, four.
That means you get to break the tie, Your Honor.
Um
Here you go, Anthony. Here you go, buddy.
You get to vote, finally.
You ain't getting paid, you ain't getting paid enough for this.
I am in favor of moving this forward, so, otherwise I am in favor of moving this forward, so, otherwise we'll never, we'll never, we have an obligation to, it, it's not like, you know, we, we, you know, can change the rules of the states. You know, the state has made cannabis legal, and so, you know, we have to manage it. So I think we have a cooperative, you know, cooperative kind of, you know, business owner and tenant, you know, and landlord, so I think we move, we move on. So with that, the motion is approved. It'll come to council on Monday.
What will we all discuss again on Monday?
In court, what's the 60-day deadline?
Does that include Elevate also then, or is it-
Sixty-day deadline.
I think it's separate. But I'm assuming that when we come to Elevate-
I'm willing to make the same motion.
Yep. Do we need to go through the entire application of Elevate, or are we quite happy to?
The only difference with Elevate is they do not have residential above them.
I think the, the date that Clara just mentioned, I think, to Mr. Layton, if, so if we don't approve this, or do something, vote it up or down by May 12th, it gets, just so everyone's clear, it gets approved with no conditions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think we can act before that.
And, and thank you, former mayor.
Just kidding.
So, so basically, would somebody care to make a motion regarding Elevate?
I will do that.
I will second also.
Thank you. And the only difference will be is the exclusion of the verbiage about residential.
Because that building has none.
Because that building has no above residential. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, just one. Oh, four?
Four. Raise your hands, four.
Oh, sorry.
Four. So we got five.
I thought you meant number four.
Sorry, no. So we got five to three.
No, hold on.
Oh, were you for it or against it?
I was against.
Make the call.
All in agreement, raise your-
Your Honor, you get to break the tie.
And I will make the same call to move forward.
Thank you.
I have 40 minutes of discussion.
Right now, we can move on to, now we can move on to a resolution of support for SP, SF 2115.
And now for something completely different.
I've got about 10 minutes, too.
This is a, sorry, are you ready, are you ready for me?
Where are you at?
Um, I don't know what page of the packet you're, it is, the request from Heritage Preservation Commission.
Recommendation to the council to approve a resolution of support for state 2115, the historic rehabilitation credit.
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion?
Just thank you to Clara and that group for the work on this. It's important.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign.
I'm leaving.
All right. The next item is the dairy site, dairy site trail design.
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. We have a proposal from Interstate Engineering. We've been working with Alex on getting ready for the design of the trail on the dairy property. As a reminder, we do have grant funding from the state of Minnesota that would cover this cost entirely. So the recommendation is to allow Interstate to move forward with the design and bidding for the trail on the dairy property. Let's maybe get some dirt moving.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Laura, any discussion? This is grant-funded by the state, and well, obviously, we need to get it done so we can spend the money that we've got allocated. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion is approved. Can those last two items, the heritage and the trail, go on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Then, the next item is economic development. Kind of, I've always had some discussions with kind of each, each of you. Obviously, economic development comes in many forms. We've held a number of work sessions, hearing from representatives, Minnesota, you know, SPD, SBC, West Fargo, West Central, and City. Today, today, obviously, we need to establish a path forward. We need to identify goals. I don't believe we can employ somebody without giving guidance on what we want them to accomplish. It would be good if we could gain a community input on, for the campaign to be successful. You know, the city did something like, obviously, with Project 500 a long time ago, and it, it was very simple and an easy goal. It was very precise. We wanted 500 jobs. I don't, you know, life's a little bit more complicated today to just measure economic improvement by, by job number increases. So, you know, we've got to measure it, you know, in, in different ways, whether that's retention, transferring of ownership, expansion of local manufacturers, percentage of tax base, you know, from, you know, between residential and commercial, childcare, local infrastructure, et cetera. We've got to establish, obviously, a common vision on what we want collectively. If we can't agree, we will never sell our community to others that we're trying to attract or to relocate here. So I believe we've got to establish priorities. Once we can do this, we can work on the strategies and how we can get it accomplished, whether that's in-house, external, how we fund it in a sustainable way, how it gets managed, you know, how do we measure progress, identify what does success look like? I don't believe simply hanging a help-wanted sign is an option. I believe, you know, what does kind of economic development in Fergus Falls mean to each and every one of us? And I think, you know, three principles, vision, goal, structure, organization, execution, funding, sustainability. And my, my suggestion is that we, we break into three groups, task each group to bring back an outline of a vision of how they want, or how they would see the accomplishment of economic development, you know, cover the principal areas that we've mentioned. You know, all groups would have access to staff and any other resources that they care to utilize. The goal would be to bring it back, a presentation, present that to the, the remainder of the council, and each team would have kind of the same opportunity. And then post that, you know, we can make decisions. The, my suggestion of, of teams was, we would have Team 31, which would consist of Jim, Scott, Rachels, and Laurel. Team 12 would consist of Laura, Scott, Kwame, and myself. And Team 31 would consist of Mark, Alan, Mike. We bring those presentations back on a special committee of the whole meeting on the 5th of May. We don't have, obviously, anything on that day. Each team would obviously make their presentations. We have discussion on the merits of that, of the programs. Can we then come to consensus of bringing the priorities, you know, how we're going to fund it, you know, what, what incentives are we going to give or not give? And then, obviously, we could consolidate that into a final package to bring back on Wednesday, the 14th of May, the next, the next literary city meeting at the committee of the whole, to just to review that everybody's still on the same page. And then on the council meeting of the 19th of May, we would make decisions. And, you know, and there would be obviously a number of decisions to be made that day as to, you know, how, how are we going to structure this? How are we going to fund it? You know, what are the priorities, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, I think on that day, we would be adopting a plan that the council has collectively brought to the table. And that would be my suggestion.
The 5th is a Monday, then?
Oh, 7th, sorry, it's the 7th, actually.
Your Honor, I, I like that plan a lot. As you know, I have an out-of-state trip planned that was specifically planned around only meeting, missing a committee of the whole meeting on the 14th. I am not here the 7th or the 14th, which I think people should move on. I'll work with the group, we'll get it ready and do the presentation. But I had specifically picked a window to minimize missing, and as you and I had talked, you were aware of that, but I think it's important that we move with this.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, to keep the timeline moving.
Right.
I know, I know there's obviously people would like to see it done sooner.
Yep.
But I think we have to go through some process to get to that point where, you know, it's a collaborative decision rather than, you know, just trying to force a square peg into a round hole. You know, for me personally, I wouldn't, I, I think we limit our job applicants if we don't have a clear revision of what we want. You know, it's a tough, it's a tough physical position to fill. So, discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to prelude this economic development. I ran on full transparency in this council. I prefer to have all the information provided to us here, so the community can hear it firsthand. I do not believe it should be on any other media. The Daily Journal indicated that the council expectations come crashing to a halt. I disagree with that. When we received North Point's letter, they were declining the opportunity to assist us in our community vision and strategies. I've witnessed the council for the last four years as a city citizen. I was elected in 2024 to serve in the council Ward Two. I ran on the platform of primary fundamentals of government and cut spending. North Point continued to say they wanted to foster economic development in Fergus Falls. I respect their success. I've indicated that to them personally. Although not as successful, I too have fostered economic development in other communities. I've sat on boards of other economic nonprofits, assisted successful and failing companies. I maintain a study of macro and microeconomics, and know what true economic development is and what it's not. Economic development is not funding salaries, benefits, providing a nice facility to simply have meetings and memos. It will take a new energy to collabor, of collaboration with Fergus Falls, which they have not done in the past. The new energy of business-minded leaders, the mayor, the council, to build a strong department in our economic endeavors. Those will need to draw in the cooperation of the state, the county, the schools, both local school districts and M-State, the chamber, deal directly with local business owners who are strictly the foundation that we have today, and on-job training, citizens, and any other third party. It was a bit disheartening to me, as they continued. I'm not too sure that there is, as I indicated earlier, I'm not too sure the change in mayor and council is contentious. It's a business-minded approach to economic development, which is a, a change that this council has never taken, or the city. To spend millions of dollars of economic development without focuses or measurable return. They've spent $900,000, $900 million in capital improvements, some which are good, some have been funded, some not so good, over the last 10 years. We've had a flat population. We have a declining local employment. We've had losses of business, both regional and locally, and an ever-increasing budget mandating higher real estate taxes. And finally, burdensome ordinances. This is strictly irresponsible in the past. Did address Greater Fergus Falls? I wanted to remain quiet on this, as it's a no-win discussion. Although, as the council continues to be reminded, the new council members are the reason the closing of Greater Fergus Falls. If I recall correctly, this new council did not vote in 2025 for Greater Fergus Falls. I have the 990s of Greater Fergus Falls since '23 to 2018. Their total revenues were $1,006, and again, that does not include '24. They, $1,006 spent, and we participated at $50,000. North Point continues to believe that their planning process, they believe our would be suboptimal. Again, the council did not vote on North Point's $18,500 proposal, which only included four or five sessions. And I've indicated earlier, this council, these council people have the heart, as the staff does, in Fergus Falls. We will attend 100 meetings for some $7,200 bucks, hundreds of hours, and for North Point, to charge $18,500 for four meetings. The new mayor and the council have been in office for some 90 days. As indicated, I ran on fiscal responsibility. Unfortunately, there have been other matters which have needed the council's attention. Some matters simply not addressed by prior council. I've expressed my concerns of the speed of government versus the need to move at the speed of light. Hence, it appears there is a difference among new mayor, council, city staff, and others. This is expected, as I indicated before. The new business environment must incorporate everyone working together outside the government, including our local.
Mike, I think we need to move on. It's time. As, I mean, is everybody-
Let me close on the final point.
Yeah, quickly, then, if you can.
Yep, I will.
We're going to stop, we're going to have a quorum.
They indicated that they were going to help other promising people who are like-kind and minded. I will not take a personal insult like that. I feel that this council works hard. We're focused on promising local endeavors, and we are wonderful people. In an effort of time, your mayor, I'll yield.
Thank you. Anybody got any other questions, or comments, rather? Everybody game to put a presentation together, bring back their kind of thoughts on economic development?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, we on a motion?
We'd be happy to send out some guidelines for all the groups to follow.
Yep, we can do that. We don't really need-
You want a motion on that?
I don't know.
I don't know whether we need one. I think, we just say.
I'd like to know where you got your numbers. 31, 12, and-
And 33?
Yeah. I don't understand what, that's fine, it's just your deal, yes, it's okay.
I was trying to remember what number I was.
You're 12, you're Team 12. Because Team 31 has got two council members from Ward Three and one from Ward One.
Okay.
And, so.
It's all right. It's okay. Just use me a little bit.
We don't have to understand everything.
A B and C.
So, we could do A, B, and C. But anyway, with that, announcements, obviously, most facilities will be closed on Friday. Garbage that would get picked up on Friday will get picked up on Thursday, and Thursday's garbage will get picked up today, so we're probably too late on that one. And there will be, obviously, a special council closed meeting to discuss potential real estate on the 21st from 4:30 to 5:15, and then regular council meeting at 5:30. And April 30th will be a committee of the whole. With that, meeting is adjourned, and thank you for-
Can we try to get Kyle here on Monday nights? I do think there's some public safety concerns.